The meeting is ordered. I'd everybody to please rise and join us in the flag of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, free, and just. Kelly, would you call the roll, please?
Jeff Dombek. Jay Shiloh.
Here.
Chris K. Hopple.
Here.
Michael De Vito.
Here.
Beth Perry Havens.
Here.
Alex Grados.
Here.
Eric Jones.
Present.
Laform Chover.
Thank you.
Yes.
Are there any changes to the agenda as proposed? Is there a motion to adopt the attempt like proposed?
So moved.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
Disavowed.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded, roll call.
Evans?
Here.
Grados?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Shiloh?
Yes.
Hopple?
Yes.
De Vito?
Yes.
Dombek?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Is there a motion to approve the NIA consent agenda as proposed?
So moved.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded, roll call.
Grados?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Shiloh?
Yes.
Hopple?
Yes.
De Vito?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Dombek?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, at this time, I would like to open the public hearing on the NIA budget. And I would invite anyone who wishes to speak to the NIA budget to come forward at this time. The record should reflect that no one came forward. Is there anyone who wants to present written materials related to the NIA budget? Again, the record should reflect that written materials were submitted. Is there a motion to close the hearing?
So moved.
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Right, I declare the hearing closed. Audience to visitors, is there anyone in the audience who wishes to address the board this evening on any issue? Communications, correspondence, informational items? Letters and newsletters? You guys gearing up?
Yeah.
So. There was some very interesting information about the tiers and where we are and where some other districts around us are. I'm still not sure how they do that. I'm not sure they're sure how they do that. FOIA requests? Any comments on, there was one and they responded?
Yeah. Kind of a recurring request of seeking information, I think we finally satisfied that individual. I haven't heard anything since that one was submitted, so hopefully that's the end of it.
Okay.
I will also note, just really quickly, FOIA requests can be, it's one of the ways that the public can access information. They can simply just email us and ask for a copy of whatever as well, so I think one of the challenges with this series kind of a FOIA request is I think the individual is looking for specific information, is looking to get it from the request. But sometimes interpreting those documents that reports that we give them as a response aren't always as easy as it sounds. So maybe what helped was in addition to responding to that FOIA request, I just said, are there specific questions you're looking to answer? Questions proposed, I gave an answer to those separate from the FOIA request. And maybe that satisfied this individual, but have a responsibility to respond to FOIA requests, but sometimes the reports and the documents that we provide aren't as easy to interpret, you know, if you're not familiar with that.
Well, good job. Hopefully you'll be satisfied.
I hope so.
I think we've given him all the information we possibly can.
Yeah.
Which is, I think, our practice. Normally that's Nicole's job, but I'm sure you can't wait until she gets back and picks up that mantle.
For a variety of reasons, that's just one of those.
Yes. Next item then would be committee reports.
Sports boosters met on Monday of last week. They have a new board. Shannon Egler is the new president, Mike Shipley is the treasurer, Jeff Rogers secretary, Christie Sharpton is the vice president, it's all in the slate. And they're desperately looking for volunteers for the EKEL Secmory, so everybody sees their social media posts, or goes to the website, can sign up, sign up here. But other than that, it's off to a great start.
SEF Board met last night, my first meeting in attendance. Obviously, the main topic is Take Root, their biggest fundraiser of the year is coming up in September. If no one's gone, it's a really fun time. It's at a new venue this year, it's been hosted at a Kishawaki Country Club. The event takes place Saturday, September 16th, starts at 5:30. Tickets can be purchased on their website, sicamoresef.org. If you are planning on attending, it helps for planning if you just buy your tickets instead of waiting to the last minute. But, and then I think in addition to that, like if you're looking for more information, if you're out in the community, somebody's asking about what SEF is. The website does a really good job if you are a novice, if you can understand it, you know, I sent just for a test. Sent some people that aren't even in the district to the website, like tell me what this is about if you go to the website, tell me if you can understand it, so. It outlines like just really what the organization does. And then obviously all the information about the fundraiser is there as well. So this would encourage that. It's capped at $200,000, so there is the potential that it could sell out, so. But obviously it's their biggest fundraiser of the year, it's an auction there, silent auction, things like that, so really good night, fun night, would encourage anybody to do it tonight.
Any other committee reports? Next item then would be beginning of the school year review?
You don't need to get five.
Can you do? Thanks Jim. Last meeting, we talked about some of the events that had already kicked off the school year and then some that were upcoming, so we thought we'd just report back, kind of in pictures, and let you see what those events looked like. So the first one was the Back to School Bash. Pretty fitting, so our comms department is here to present later. But this is their big event, bringing everyone back, so you can see by the pictures, I think it was the largest attendance so far. We're already talking, we may have to expand it, it was just so well attended. Rock climbing wall, food trucks, a lot of people that just get involved. It's a great example of just that community, school district relationship that we have. And there was our comms department there, so just did a fantastic job, it was a great event. The next one was new educator orientation. So I was talking a little bit about this, we had some of our current educators come to welcome our new educators. So right when they got out of the car and started walking up, they were just cheering for them, had signs just to welcome them to the Sycamore family. Next one, Steve. So here's just a little bit about what we did. Steve actually took us, he was the driver for a facilities tour. Did a facilities tour, a little scavenger hunt, give them a little history of the district, of the logo, and the meaning behind the logo. Talked about different places throughout the community that we work with. So that was a lot of fun, a great day, great new group. We ended that, kind of the last stopping point was Pete Johnson statue and talked to him a little bit about someone kind of referred to as Mr. Sycamore who embodies what it means to be an educator here. You know, who inspired him to get to where he was. And just related that to the impact that could have on students, so. Pretty great ending for those that didn't know much about Pete. Opening day then, so when we welcomed all staff back, you know, our slogan was Be Relentless, kind of playing off of one of the speakers we had last year, so this was a little mural that the art department and AP students did, there were messages in there to teachers at all grade levels that had an impact on these students throughout their time. Sycamore School District, it was a place for staff just to stop on the way in and take pictures. So just some more pictures from the day, we had a staff band, we had t-shirts for staff with Be Relentless on it. Know that, not including picture Jim actually got up and sang a little bit with the band at one point, but no, he didn't, but he was there, he was there.
He could have.
He could have, he could have. So we'll remember that for next year maybe. Kindergarten welcome night, this is my shameless, we didn't have a kind of picture from that night, so I included one of my kid. But he doesn't know that, but that was a fun night. The elementarys do a great job just welcoming people new, you know, to the elementary schools. One more that, so from that night west, this is a cool new thing that if you haven't been to west recently, get in there and see the courtyard, so they did a lot of work this summer. Through an SEF grant, they have an outdoor kitchen area. So they use that space that night to get new students making dirt pie if you can't read that, but then there's a little reading area. Emily, is it completely finished or still?
Still under construction.
Still under construction, but those last couple of weeks of summer really came a long way, so that's going to be a great area that maybe wasn't used to its full capacity that they really turned around. First day of student attendance. So go ahead to the next slide, Steve, you had bulletin boards that have come a long ways with messages to students and then these next one, this is what it's all about, righteous families and students and seeing friends reunite for the first time in a few months, the excitement on their faces, excitement on new families' faces and then you know, teachers seeing students back and seeing parents, just a lot of excitement that day. Here's in the classroom, also some things getting going already on that first day. Again, student excitement, students back, ready to learn, meeting classmates that maybe they didn't have. The next one is southeast of Christie's last year, southeast staff all got matching sunglasses for that day. So there's a lot of excitement there for Christie, no one answered last year. But then one thing that I just wanted to highlight, because I think the other levels have really done a great job of this, but really new at the high school. There was a group of teachers that got together and working with Brian, they wanted to do something new those first two days at the end of the day, so they did a shortened schedule. So the end of the day, they did a genius hour on Thursday to where teachers took a passion of theirs and then opened it up to new students, so students that they don't necessarily teach that year, really all about building relationships and there was floral arrangement, Steve, if you go to the next one, floral arrangement, there was things on board games, arts, theater, any cooking, anything and everything to try and get students to go to an area that they're passionate about, maybe meet a teacher that they wouldn't necessarily meet otherwise. Brand new. And then the second day, they did like an elementary style field days. And everyone went out to the back and you can see there were community partners that came in, so there were police and fire doing tug of war. Teachers jumping into the dump tank. Rumor has it Jen Miller wasn't planning on it and just decided to get up to the challenge of students in full clothes. Didn't dress expecting to get done. But again, just building relationships, playing games with students, brought in the simulator. And just a great event, a lot of positive feedback from staff and some of our veteran staff that wouldn't necessarily think of doing this maybe, but just thought it was a great idea and something new to the high school. And all about building relationships and seeing students and teachers in a different light, so. Exciting to see, you know, the level that doesn't necessarily do these types of things, try it out, just to see how it goes. So that is a lot of work that went into these days and a lot of time, kind of just trying to give it to you in a two minutes, so. If there's any questions on those days, I'd be happy to try and answer them, but really just wanted to share the great stuff that was going on these first few days and just the excitement around having people back in the building. There's nothing and that's all I have.
Looks like everybody's having fun?
Yeah, yeah, it was great. It was just a lot of fun to see everyone back, I think the administrators would agree and.
I talked to a few high school teachers who had nothing but amazing things to say about these first few days, they were just really excited. And I also heard Nate Wright was literally sweeping the halls with a physical broom, which apparently there's a new vernacular going around that, oh, you got swept, man, like so. Are going really well over there with that, so.
Yeah.
You know, just to kind of, and Nick touched on this, but the middle school last year, you may remember the presentation from Mrs. Frank Woods and the circular about significant 72. That's what they said that we expanded to all of our schools this year. So this was not worth of that, but again, not just at high school, middle school, all the elementary schools really implemented that. Kind of an SEL component, really building relationships with kids and among staff. And we had some changes in staffing, you know, from last spring to this year, so building that connection with staff too, so. Pretty fun couple of first days. Any other questions or comments?
No, Richard?
Thank you.
That's awesome.
Next item then would be, would normally be Nicole.
Yeah.
But it's going to be the superintendent.
Pinch hit a little bit here tonight, it's been a long time. Most of you know my previous job as the only central office administrator, I worked on the budget quite a bit. I've distanced myself from that. Nicole does a phenomenal job. She's really the brains behind the budget, but we had some time to chat, so hopefully I'll be able to answer the questions that you've got. But before we get to our tentative budget, the first thing I'm going to do is ask the board to approve a resolution regarding the FY24 NIA budget.
Is there a motion to approve the resolution regarding the fiscal year 24 NIA budget?
So moved.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded, roll call.
Jones?
Yes.
Shiloh?
Yes.
Hopple?
Yes.
De Vito?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Grados?
Yes.
Dombek?
Yes.
Motion carries.
And again, we approve that even though NIA is a separate entity, we're the fiscal agent for NIA, so that all of their budget and their finances goes through our school district, even though it's a separate entity, so that's why we need to do that. Next however, is presentation of tentative budget and establishment of a hearing date, so Nicole put together some slides, coached me a little bit, again, hopefully I can answer questions and relay everything appropriately. But one of the things I'll ask before we move on, after those slides is approval of a hearing date. Which we'll need to do September 26th, I think is the date that we typically do that at the end of the month, September, so we can get it filed by the end of the month. You have a same for this one, just so I can see the slides a little bit better. So this is the FY23. Not quite complete audited yet, the auditors have been in, they've gone over everything, but they haven't wrapped up the audit quite yet, so. This is actually FY23 budget. You'll see here at the bottom, there's a pretty significant deficit. That's really, that large number, 8.1 million, really is the result of wrapping up all the construction from the last couple of summers previous to this one. One of the things that Nicole asked me to point out was that this number is really the one to draw your attention to. It shows a deficit of $240,000, that's really the operational budget for our school district. That's unaudited also, so we don't have any adjustments that the auditors may give us or probably in Nicole's words likely to give us. Based on conversations with the auditors, as well as, you know, her familiarity with the budget, she does expect us to have a small surplus. Probably won't be very big, but she does expect us to be in the black by the time the auditors send adjustments and finalize them, so. This really wraps up the FY23 budget.
I have a question, or do you want us to wait till the end?
No, go ahead.
Okay, the current year-to-date federal revenue seems to be a bit lower than anticipated. Are we just waiting on a final payment or something? I'm looking at 1.6 million and it was budgeted to be around 4.8.
I would guess federal, and this will come up in a later slide, so part of the federal revenue that we will, that we anticipate receiving this year is SRR2 and SRR3 funds. Those grants aren't quite yet finalized, they've been submitted, but they get kicked back to us, so once they're finalized, we know exactly that everything's going to be approved. I assume that number will change a little bit, but that's a good example of a question that I'd like to find, I'd like to get a firm answer from Nicole and then I'll send that to the question. Other than that, the federal dollars you'll see a little bit later also, she expects that to be pretty aligned with what we receive. Any other questions on this slide before I move on? So a couple of slides just on the board's goals in terms of the budget. We always would like to have a balanced budget, and we think that we're going to have that for FY23. We'd like to strengthen the fund balance, and that's part of board policy really, is trying to get to a place where we have a 25% fund balance. People often ask, well, you know, shouldn't you be, you know, running it lean and kind of running it down to zero? Some of you, myself, also have lived through times when all of one state funding stopped. And we've all lived through COVID, whether you're on the board at the time or lived through it in the community. There are times when money just dries up, and although we rely a lot on local property taxes, we do still get a lot of money from the state and federal sources. So maintaining some sort of fund balance just kind of for a rainy day, which in my years as superintendent I've had to go through, I think Jim has lived through that year at Sycamore as well. That's why we shoot for that, that 25% fund balance. And then one of the goals that we talked about when I was hired, that I know that you guys spoke with Kathy before me as well as Nicole, was just trying to get away from tax anticipation warrants, we've been able to do that. We do not foresee having to go back to tax anticipation, tax anticipation warrant at this time of year. And again, in terms of budget goals, we want to be transparent so that the community stakeholders know what's happening with the finances. There's a financial dashboard that helps us to reach that goal, to have open communication. We do that to some degree here at board meetings, you know, with the board, the administration, try to fill questions and respond as best we can. But the town hall meetings that we'll host this year will help us to maintain some transparency as well. And then the last one up here is informing the community of district goals, of the strategic design and how aligned is the district's budget. One of the things that we're working on, actually both communications. Apologize, I don't know if this will come up in the communications presentation tonight, but one of the things we're working on is a year-end annual report that we'll put out towards the end of the year, so that, again, we're just communicating with stakeholders and residents and where things stand in terms of our finances. Unless there's any questions or comments about goals, I'm going to get into the meat of the budget. And I kind of talked about this when I answered Alex's question. So here are local, state and federal assumptions that Nicole has made in terms of revenue. She really doesn't expect anything out of the ordinary. These are really pretty much based on historical numbers. So might, you know, tweak a little bit here and there, but for the most part, this is what she's expecting in terms of revenue. You can see, some of you know, that the bulk of the revenue for our school district comes from local property taxes. We do get some from federal and from state sources, but 70% comes from our community. I'm not going to go through all of those bullet points, but Nicole is just breaking down sources of revenue, the locally property taxes, transportation fees, food service, textbook income. Some of these are really small, some of these are a little bit bigger, so. All of those put together really represent the bulk of our local revenue. On the right-hand side, she listed the state sources for revenue, so evidence-based funding, reimbursement for transportation, drivers app, and so on. And then in terms of federal, IDEA grants, which really supports our special education and 504 programs. Title grants, 1, 2 and 4. SRR2 and 3 are listed there and not a program in Medicaid. In terms of her assumptions and along the lines of expenses, she's broken this out here in the pie chart. No surprise that the bulk of our expenses come from salary and benefits. So you can see those in the blue and the orange. And then you can see where the other expenses, we expected to come from purchase services, supplies and so on. Any questions?
The other objects category?
What's that?
The other objects category? Is that debt repayment?
Yes. Probably a couple of other light items there as well, but debt repayment would be there. We did add some personnel this year, so these were discussed with finance committee, that was Eric and Chris at the time, we discussed those back in the spring. And these are some of the recommendations or the additions that we've made. All of those in that first group, actually, yeah, all of those in the first group really were to support our special education programs, so. Additional special education teachers, at least in terms of time, at South Prairie, West Southeast and at the middle school. Additional time for school psychologists, speech language pathologist, and then a full-time social worker that ended up at Southeast and West. Then we had one non-certified addition, which is a halftime custodian at South Prairie, with the bulk of the students being assigned to South Prairie as a result of boundary study. That school was already kind of taxed in terms of supporting the school, keeping the plan and those things. So we did a halftime custodial position at South Prairie. So Nicole also broke down expenses in a little bit more detail. Building budgets account for just under a million dollars, right at a million dollars, which is a large number. When you compare that though to other parts of the budget, it's actually pretty small. But building, the building budget, the expenses there is about $997,000. Then she brought down the different departments, learning and teaching, O and M, transportation, technology, athletics and special education, it's about six and a half million. Oscar programs, right around a million. Salaries, again salaries and benefits is the largest part of the budget. And for the SEA and CESA staff, those are outlined in the contract, so pretty clear. We have an agreement with custodial maintenance, they're not necessarily formally organized, but we do have an agreement that that kind of functions as a collective bargaining agreement with custodial maintenance staff. And the advantage in terms of budget is that lines out or lays out hourly wages and things of that nature. And then benefits, so TRS and DIS, and the teacher's health insurance system. There's an employer portion that the district is obligated to pay, there's an employee portion. And actually, as a result of collective bargaining agreements, the board pays all of that for teachers in terms of TRS and then almost all of that in terms of the health insurance. I R F, Medicare, social security and health insurance are included there in the benefits as well. So there are other pieces to the budget, but in terms of the largest ones that make up the bulk of the operation of the school district, building budgets tag, learning and teaching, athletic, extracurricular, O and M and transportation are two of the other large ones. Nicole just broke those out, there's about a 19% increase there. That comes primarily in learning and teaching, but really in O and M and transportation. So we think we know what's going to happen with things like fuel, possible unleaded and diesel fuel, but that can fluctuate quite a bit. And in terms of O and M, that's where utilities come from, to power, gas, those sorts of things, trying to guess what's going to happen with utilities over the course of the year. We've had some better luck in terms of getting supplies and materials for building repairs and things like that. Sometimes they're still difficult to get, we're dealing with one of those situations right now. So there's about a 19% increase when you look at those six areas of our budget. And then a couple of summary slides in terms of revenue. We're a tax-capped district, so we keep a close eye on CBI. EAD went up about 10% in constructions, about a little over 11 and a half million. State funding is held flat in terms of the budget, and then federal funding is held flat also. SRR2 and 3, we've got a little bit more time with those, but those will run out here in the next year. So something that we've been keeping an eye on and continue to keep an eye on. And then expenses, I talked about building and other operating budgets increasing about 19%. Teaching custodial contracts are set, parrot contract was, was modified. The CESA contract had been set, but there was a group of about forty, forty, forty-five employees that were added to that mid-year. It's one of the things I hadn't lived through before, I really didn't live through it, Nicole was responsible for working with CESA on that. But I didn't necessitate opening up the contract, but there were certain portions of the contract, contract that needed to be addressed. Now that those have been addressed, Nicole used those in, in her estimates. One of the other things to keep an eye on is getting to that fifth, that kind of magic minimum wage of fifteen dollars per hour. So we're making progress towards that. And then monitoring retirements over the next couple of years. So as usually happens during the, the spring and summer, we've gotten some requests for retirement, not necessarily this year, but over the course of the next four years. So Nicole is, is factoring those in the budgets as well. Told her I wouldn't give this presentation unless I knew exactly what the first bullet point was going to read. FY twenty-four will be balanced, she feels pretty confident about that. One of the challenges of building the budget in August is that you still have nine months to go. So you do make a lot of assumptions, but I think historically Nicole's got a great handle on what's entailed in terms of our district operating, the school district. So she feels pretty confident FY twenty-four will be balanced. And in terms of cash flow, we don't need tax anticipation warrants, but it's still kind of important to make sure that our investments are liquid and easily accessible. So we don't have any long-term investments right now, all of it is liquid and no short-term borrowing or tax anticipation warrants needed at this time. I think this is the last slide. So this is, this comes right off of the state budget form and shows you revenues, expenditures for each of those funds, education, operations and maintenance, transportation, working cash. There are other funds, but these are some of our largest funds, our operational funds. So revenue expenditures, both the differences, and you can see in all of those, there is a surplus except for transportation, at least right now. And at the end, in terms of fund balances, all of those funds should have a surplus except for operations and maintenance. We're a little, still a little ways out from June thirtieth, so that's an estimate at this time, but because of the other fund balances being positive, deficit protection plan is not even at this time. And again, we're not asking the board to approve the budget tonight, this is a tentative budget. Again, Alex's question earlier was whether or not Nicole might be here. She may be here in September, if not, I'll brush up again and make sure that I'm, I'm able to present that. But in September, we would ask the board to approve the final budget to, to start the school year. Any questions for me?
I have a couple, maybe it'd be better if we just talked about it. So you can refer to Nicole, is it similar to what I had earlier, so just?
I would, I would say if they're detailed, just shoot me an email and I can get answers, but then report that to the rest of the board.
Oh, okay.
Between now and the end of September.
Alright.
Yeah.
That'd be great.
Sure. Any general questions that I might be able to answer?
This, this one should be pretty straight. Are we a tier, still a tier one or do we move back to tier two?
It's a really good question, I do know the answer to that one. We've been a tier-two district since I arrived here until now. We're a tier-one district is what we're saying. So that means we get a little bit more support from the state. It's a good chunk, we think, but it's not going to tip the scales, you know, big time. So we did move from, we do believe that we moved from tier two to tier one. And most of that is based on the district's, the community's ability to support the school district in adequacy, which is, as Jim mentioned earlier, state doesn't always know how they do that calculation. I've always been a little mystified in terms of how the state makes that calculation, but based on feedback that we've seen from the state, we have moved from tier two to tier one.
So for the maintenance budget, I mean, I think from what I, and again, I'm trying to recall, at one point in this, I think three hundred thousand dollars was a good budget in the past. See now it's, looks like it's up to, you said nine hundred ninety-seven thousand. Is that, is that kind of like, is that the game plan then in terms of our infrastructure improvement? Just kind of feel like I, uh?
So I think that this?
Yep.
So my understanding, and Nick is there, so correct me if I'm wrong, if I misheard this. This is a combination of all the, the building budgets, so both schools' building budget, the high schools' building budget. My understanding from Nicole was that that was, was pretty consistent with what had been done in the past. So that's probably another really good question for me to ask her and, and to get an answer. In terms of not only this budget year, but what she expects going forward.
So that's necessarily building improvements, capital projects, it's just?
That would come out of O and M.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah, it's like the principal budget.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm thinking of that presentation with Mark where he was like, he said that we had a three hundred thousand dollar budget each year, but he usually always went over and, you know, padding. And that's, and maybe I remember it wrong, but?
No, I, I do remember that conversation. Mark's, Mark's budget that he uses to support facility repairs and things like that in each of the buildings is typically about two hundred and fifty to three hundred thousand.
Okay, so that's part of the, the building.
That would be part of, that would come out of O and M, so he's got a line, actually a couple of lines in the O and M budget to support building repairs.
So the buildings is, that's a different set of repairs?
Yeah, well, and this really isn't repairs, it would be, you know, supply, instructional supplies that are needed in a school. So building principals oversee those budgets and they use those to support the school on the budget. So that nine hundred ninety-seven thousand is a, is a combination of all of the building budgets for all seven schools.
Okay. And then some?
That suffer from cylinder repairs and things like that, the, the structure comes out of O and M.
Does the chart from the earlier reception show supplies of three point seven, so I didn't know if that was different. Is that, so do those supplies encompass more than the nine ninety-seven?
It does, so part of that is the nine ninety-seven that building, each building has, so the principals have discretion over that. Part of this is district supplies that, that we provide at the, at the district level and then set up in schools. So textbooks, for example, those don't necessarily, you know, new textbook adoption wouldn't come out of, a building from that would come out of a, a district account.
Okay, and the O and M, the, what I'm recounting, that's part of the six point five million, that's not line itemed out yet, or it wasn't, it is. You, that two fifty number is part of the six point five.
Yeah, yeah. Any other questions for me? Been a long time since I've done one of these, so I'm a little nervous then.
Yeah, and, and now to grill you, I guess I'm, I'm just wondering too, I know we talked about the F G M architects' plan and, and it kind of, and it got stalled out. It was like, yeah, we had the folks come in and present some alternative options of funding it and, and stalled out. This budget, I think, is, this doesn't address those issues, that's, I'm going to, it's going to be a separate.
That'll be a separate conversation.
Yeah.
And that's, so?
And obviously it's not, like, there's a lot of work left to do.
No, and, and anything, so kind of going back to the high school, right, and, and the plan, the, the F G M is, is presented as, well, not necessarily planned, but the information F G M has presented as well as, P N A, it's given us in terms of finance. So all that is, that's still something that's on our radar, not part of this budget, but it's something that we need to discuss in more detail this fall, at least start that discussion this fall.
Because that, if the, is additional financing is secured via referendum or something, that would tack on to the debt services fund, right?
It would, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
So that?
And likely wouldn't impact this budget, it would probably show up in, in future budgets.
Yeah, I suppose it would, at that point, that was.
Absolutely.
For the personnel additions, is that a lot of that tied to the S R funding? And so I'm just looking at psychologists, med, some of that, I just, are those recommendations rooted?
Really was just rooted in need.
Need, okay.
So every year, for the past couple of years, we've met with each principal separately, as well as each department head separately. And kind of had conversations about what they needed for their building and for their apartment. Should we do that a little bit different? We had multiple principals and, and most of the directors all at once to kind of hear those requests. That group knows that the budget is limited and that it's finite, so all of those requests are based on need. And then part of our job at Central Office, Nicole and I, is going through all of those requests, having some follow-up conversations and then trying to prioritize what's most important and what the budget allows. At some point, budget never supports all of the requests, but all of these, those six positions at the top really were a result of need. Most of the increases in terms of students who qualify for some services.
So now, now compliance, though, is now like tight compliance, it's just a matter of, as our district grows, needs change.
Yep, and although, you know, we'll know sixth day enrollment, Thursday, if I remember correctly. So we'll share that with, with everybody. I don't expect a significant change in terms of enrollment, but, you know, we're still seeing some of that post-COVID. Students struggling academically and so, I wouldn't say a large number of students qualifying for special education services, they didn't qualify before. But maybe students who qualify needing a little bit more support. So these six positions, those additions, most of those, you know, being part-time additions do, and in some cases those were adding point four, point six to make a one full-time position. Those are really based on student need.
That's what I was going to say to Steve, is it seems weird that the point four, right, much point fours, but most of those positions were already point sixes, they were part-time positions. And because of need, we needed to make those full-time, that's something we talked about with finance and committee, but that's why the point four is making some point.
I'm sure that Nicole probably can't answer it, and there's probably nobody in the state that can, based on your previous comment. I'd love to know how DeKalb went to tier two, we went to tier one, and they get eight million more dollars this year, we get six hundred thousand.
If you can answer that question, I'd, I'd be really excited. Sometimes the, how schools are assigned in terms of tiers, how funding is calculated, it's never one straight answer, right? It's never because you have this characteristic in your district, you know, you get X amount of dollars. I've experienced that in, in previous positions too, where you kind of expected one thing, got something different, it's hardly ever more than they expected, it's usually less. And you make calls to the state and they really, all they can tell you is, well, you know, we'll plug everything into a formula and that's never picks out. Super frustrating.
Well, you asked about how the state fund changed, and according to their E B F spreadsheet, we went from eleven eight to twelve four million, so. Six hundred, six hundred thousand, if you count the comparison, went from forty-four million to fifty-one, so.
And they're tier two, and tier one supposedly the tier that has the bulk of the state funds.
Something like that.
Supposedly, it seems off, but we're at the state, so.
So our funding went up by a few percent, there's one up by twenty, someone can explain that to me someday.
Give me Jeff Pegg. You can invite him here again.
Any other questions for me?
Just how many positions does each area account for? Is that just for one position or for one in each school?
Of these in specific?
Yeah, I mean approximately.
Yeah, so for example, the, the first bullet point is point four equivalency increase at South Prairie. So there's a point six position, a part-time position, that position is still at South Prairie, now it's a full-time position as opposed to, to a half.
Oh, okay.
And at, and at West and Southeast, that's one position that was serving both schools. Instead of point six, now it's one person, you know, full-time position serving both. And so on and so forth, does that make sense?
That's, that's good in a way because it probably incentivizes the person to stay if they're having a full-time as opposed to a part-time. Rather than hiring two part-time people.
Yeah, it's, it's weird and Nick could probably discuss this or, or talk about it more than I can, but we kind of focus on what, on what our need is first. But we also have learned that some positions, sometimes part-time, sometimes full-time is more appealing to, to individuals who apply, so just kind of depends.
Oh, okay.
Sometimes there's a, you know, maybe a mom who just wants part-time, you know, but wants to stay working and, and, and in the school system. Other times, you know, the people aren't interested in, in part-time, they want a full-time day. So if, um, there's no real rhyme or reason, I, at least not that I've found. Okay, that's it all again.
I just have one question, so as, as you're finalizing the budget, we will be getting additional updates as to how it's going to be balanced? Because right now, some things are remissly divided, but we know it's going to be balanced, but I was just wondering if we're going to get updates on that process at this point.
I think Nicole will give an update, I don't know how much, I don't know that it's going to be extensive, a lot of detail in terms of the update between now and September. If you get specific questions, and this doesn't just go to your question, Chris, but anybody, if you get a specific question, you know, Alex mentioned that, shoot me an email. I'll make sure that it gets forwarded to Nicole. And I can definitely follow up and make sure that, and when she does the presentation in September, she'll, she'll, she kind of is able to talk about how it's going to be balanced by the time we get to June thirtieth.
Thank you.
What's the date from the?
We get September twenty-sixth.
Then just regular reading.
Is there a motion then to set a hearing on the budget and establish what, for that? Is there a motion to establish a hearing date on the budget for September twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-three?
So moved.
Seconded. Seconded, roll call.
Shyla?
Yes.
Cottle?
Yes.
DeRito?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Brados?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Blombak?
Yes.
Motion heard.
Say it again.
What's that?
I said we, we shall say it again.
Yeah. A little bit of a shell game tonight, so I did Nicole's part and really under superintendent's report. Uh, I'm going to turn it over to Lauren Holtz, our director of communications and community engagement, to talk about her department and the work that they do.
Thank you. Good evening, I'm Lauren Holtz, I'm the director of communications and communication for our school district. And I'm thrilled to be joined here tonight with our team and to be able to talk a little bit about our department and the work that we do for our district. So just to give you a general overview of our department, what we do, we consider ourselves the storytellers and the relationship builders of our district. We're tasked with creating two-way engagement opportunities for the district to communicate with our families, with our stakeholders, with our students and with our staff. So this is our team, Nick had showed this photo earlier, but that was at our back-to-school bash, that was just a few weeks ago. And yeah, we're going to, going to go through all of our members and our responsibilities. So unfortunately, Stephen Jamrock couldn't be here tonight, he's our video and events specialist, and he's actually working a varsity soccer game tonight and making sure that that, live coverage is currently on Spartan TV. So he oversees and produces content, specifically video projects for our district. And then he also manages our digital signage that we have at almost every building in our district. He manages multiple studio locations, including the one at the high school, the one here at the middle school, and also assists with our Spartan TV junior studio as well. He is the club advisor for Spartan TV. He is our operator of MetroNet two and Comcast fourteen, which is- He is our operator of MetroNet-two and Comcast fourteen, which is our cable access, our government access cable channel network, where we can stream Spartan TV. He runs SpartanTV.org, which is the website extension of Spartan TV, where you can also stream live, and then assist in TV production classes at the high school and middle school. And they did actually add a second class at the high school this year due to the strong interest of the program. So just a little bit of an overview of what he does, and now I'm handing it off to Hannah Nelson.
Hi, I'm Hannah Nelson, I'm the Technical Production Coordinator for the district. I am based pretty much in the auditorium of the high school. So anything going on in that space, I'm taking care of the technical aspects for that. Whether that's scheduling, doing rental contracts with, for example, dancer styles that we have come in, all that kind of stuff, well, will be, I will be the main point of contact. As part of it, I also run the technical entertainment crew. It's a club at the high school that takes care of everything backstage, and anything technical that the students run in the auditorium. So while they do that, I serve as the technical director while the shows go, so basically we have student-led productions. The only thing I'm doing at the kind of show point when we actually get going is I'm making sure concessions run smoothly, tickets are going, and any emergencies, I will take care of. Pretty much everything else, a student is doing. And so you see, we have a, we made a logo there, and that's our crew for Clue last year. Some of the highlights from last year are our new school and play attendance involvement. Last year, we did Spentro the New School, and new schools and plays typically take about two months in prep for that, and then we have three shows on that ending weekend. So for our overall attendance for that, we did move from, to Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, and that raised about sixty-four percent in that attendance. And that could just be, we picked a new show that nobody had heard of, but we marketed a lot to the kids, whether that be high school or elementary, to kind of show kids what we're doing, and then you kind of connect with that TV show as well. For Clue, that last photo there, we, for that play, it also takes about two months. And that, let's see, that increase in attendance was about four-hundred-and-eleven percent. Basically, the year before, we had about forty people per show. This year, I think our lowest was about in the hundred range, our highest was about three-sixty for one of the shows. So we're raising those attendance for, for the genre events. Overall, in the, in the auditorium last year, we had four rentals and nine internal events that we ran tickets for. So that picture down at the bottom there, that's Orcasus, one of our biggest, you know, selling things. In terms of the auditorium, they're only in there for two weeks. So we have two weeks to do all the technical aspects of that production, and then we have those, those shows that we do. And so that, that picture is from one of the dances there, my student was very proud of that, that dance lighting there. And then the middle school, as we're standing here for that, we have about a week that they do. They come in, we do all the lighting, all that stuff, and then that weekend, they do their shows, and that's, we're done. So it's a very quick turnaround for these students, but they do it really well, and I'm not a problem. And so, working to kind of increase our presence in the district, we revamped our Facebook page, which is typically just the tickets. If you see that photo right there, we've made it an overall auditorium page. We post about live events, concerts we have in the auditorium, as well as I post albums of events like Spentro and Orcasus. You can find those pictures up there, because often when we do productions, you can't have any photography while we're doing them. So I take pictures and dress rehearsal, and post them there for the families of the students, and. And then I've, I've worked with Mason on that Facebook, and been working on a auditorium website as well to get information out to rentals, and all the clubs, so Orcasus would have like a, um, sales schedule, since that's always so complicated, unfortunately. Oh, I also have a, we implemented a plan to hire students as production assistants for our rentals, so anything outside of the district will come in, and we have about four of those in the theater. That's all of me, and then I believe it's Jen next, if you want to do it.
Hi, my name is Jen Eiffel, I am the Administrative Assistant for the Communications Department. I kind of joke that I wear five hats, if not more. Number one, I manage the www.shopfourtwoseven.store, which is for online gear and apparel. I also am in charge of the print shop, where I do bulk copies for teachers, staff, I do print event programs, and I also print posters. For Shop Four Two Seven last year, we had net sales of over eleven thousand dollars, gross profit of about forty-five hundred dollars. And in that, about four-hundred-and-eighty-five orders and about seven-hundred-and-thirty items. Just this summer, we sold four-hundred P E-shirts. So we are, you know, twelve dollars at a time, we're, we're doing good things. As far as the copies, you can see almost six-hundred-thousand copies were made on the black and white copyer, and then color copyer, almost a hundred-and-forty-thousand copies, and then printed about a hundred posters. And today, I printed about sixty, so halfway to this year. One of the other things I do is, I do a lot with social media, and I am here and I go out to the schools, and I take lots of pictures and give them to Nick to use in his presentation. I really enjoy getting out and seeing the kids, I used to work at the middle school, I used to work at a grade school, so it's my chance to get out and see kids and tell all the great stories, and work with the teachers to help tell those stories. I also assist with district-wide events like Back-to-School Bash, United Center Orientation, the Higher East School that the high school did this year, help with distribution of T-shirts in opening day, and helps with some PD days when needed. I also work on the website, Four Two Seven Exchange, have created and analyzed surveys, had, I always do additional assistance as assigned, either by my department or anybody else who calls and asks. I kind of joke that I'm a utility player, like, just put me in coach, what do you need? I'm there to help. So that's, that's my role. And next we have Mason.
Hello, buddy, for those of you who have not met me or haven't met you personally, I'm Mason Dukes. I came into this role with a communications specialist for our department in January of this year, which was a really exciting opportunity for me, because I graduated class of twenty-twenty-one from Sycamore. So it's really cool to come back and work in this department that I had a hand in, kind of assisting with David Olson, who used to be the director. He was also like the club lead at the high school, so I worked really closely with him. So it's cool to come back and work in this capacity. You'll find me around admin sometimes or at district events, but most of the time, I'm actually working from the city of Chicago remotely, where I'm a full-time student at DePaul University in communication. So this is kind of a cool thing that I get to do, where I get to work in the district and kind of apply these theories and concepts that I'm learning in school in real time, which I count myself very lucky to have that experience for. My role consists largely of the scheduling, creation, and posting of content for all of our S Y C four-two-seven social media channels. We have Facebook pages for all of our schools, as well as a Twitter and Instagrams for our district, high school, and middle school. So anything, any photos that Jen gives me or Lauren passes on a cool story, I'm usually the one that that passes through to get that scheduled and posted. I also do graphic design for social media and the digital signage, physical signage, anything that really kind of flows through the department that Jen and Lauren need help with, they'll sling that along to me. So the hiring bus drivers sign out in front of the high school, that was something I worked on. I assisted our intern this summer, Ella Sharp, in our new educators poster that was in Nick's photo earlier in the presentation. So really, anything that Nick kind of needs to get done on that front will come through me. And then I also maintain and complete updates to the district's various websites for all the buildings. That can be anything from updating a quick video on Matt Anderson's library page today that I just did, to a little bit more heavy in-depth stuff. Like Hannah mentioned, I'm working on building out the S H S auditorium website, which I'm hoping to launch in the coming weeks, to kind of market that space a little bit more to our community and give that information out a little bit more freely than just having, you know, people have to individually go to Hannah herself. And then kind of similar to Jen too, I execute any catch-all projects that flow through our department. So really, anything from creating templates to our new platform, Parent Square, or Crisis Communications, video projects that maybe Steven can't handle, that'll sometimes come and fall to me, so I'll get that done, so we can keep things moving in our department. Kind of the big things that I've been really excited about since I started this role was the revival of those various building-specific and S H S auditorium Facebook pages. If you had looked at those back in February, you probably would have seen the default Facebook icon and really nothing happening. So working with Lauren, we've really tried to revamp those and give that as another way to specifically target families of those individual schools. That way, we can utilize the district Facebook page for more district-oriented content, and then we can target more specifically and share these unique stories that are coming on a school-by-school basis. Another thing that happened this year that was really exciting was our Teacher Appreciation Week, twenty-twenty-three campaign. That was something that took the help of our entire department to pull off, and that consisted of me editing video footage that Stephen and Lauren got out and shot of our various educators' room buildings. And that was a really cool experience that we're looking to continue in the coming years, just because we saw a lot of support from the community when we posted those. It was really an opportunity to kind of hear these stories as educators that, you know, they work every day, every day in our buildings, but, you know, we might not get a chance to meet them personally, so that was something I was really excited to work on. And then auditorium website, and then most recently, within the last few weeks, we established a Sycamore Middle School Instagram, which kind of wanted to get on the ground, so that way we could have another way to connect with students and also parents who are on that platform, but maybe not Facebook. And if you see anything really cool, it was actually probably not our department, it was Justin Haynes, which has been doing a great job and really excited to kind of get into those accounts and post Sycamore Middle School content. So we hope to kind of bring that to the other schools as well and get more administrators involved in their various pages. And that's it for me, but I'm gonna turn it back over to Lauren.
And one other team member who couldn't be here tonight, our district translator, Balleria Gutierrez, who we hired actually just two weeks ago, so she serves in our communications department as well. She attends meetings with Spanish-speaking families, and she also helps us to convert written materials from English to Spanish when we need that. So we're so grateful to her as well. And then finally, my role as the Director of Communications and Community Engagement is really just to pull our diverse group together and really bring us all under one umbrella. So all of our different internal and external communications from the district, and really oversee all of our district publications, branding, social media, website, communication relations, and most importantly, crisis communications. So I wanted to highlight, as we step into the new school year, the twenty-three, twenty-four, we have a lot of different exciting things going on that I want to talk to you about tonight. So first off, that back-to-school bash that Nick mentioned, that is through the hard work of this department, who really come together as a team to put that night together as a special event for our families. And this event started back in twenty-twenty-one as a way to welcome families back after that period of e-learning and transitioning them back into the physical classroom. We loved it so much that it's now become a tradition of ours, and it really just highlights why this district is so special, and how we have so many different community partners that can come together for one night as a huge celebration, and I hope that we can continue that for years to come. Also stepping into this school year, it's the first time that all seven of our schools are unified with the Spartan mascot. We announced that at the end of last school year, and then this summer, we worked hard to go into all the buildings and get signage updated, and make sure that we've transitioned things over, and we've done some replacements. So if you happen to be in any of our buildings, you'll probably notice that a lot of the old mascots are now gone and now have been replaced with our Spartans. So really, we felt like stepping out of the boundary study, that it was important that we all be together and as one big family, and as a Spartan unit, we all come together under that one mascot, and it's been really great for everyone. It's been really cool to see, our kids are pretty amped up to all be Spartans now together. And then Mason spoke about this already, but we do now have Facebook pages established for all of our different schools. We were flooded with content last year, and so this was such a beautiful problem to have, that we felt like we finally were at a place where we had enough content to develop separate strategies for each of our schools. So you'll now notice that we allow our schools to have access through their administrators if they'd like, but then we also collaborate with them to continue to run those pages. And then we do have Instagram for high school and middle school, we felt like with those audiences, that's the right fit for them. We've also launched Parent Square, stepping into the new school year. So that is our district-wide communication system that we are so excited to have. It allows us to communicate from a district level, a building level, and a classroom level all in one place, so that has been absolutely wonderful. An additional benefit of this system is that it translates into all fifteen spoken languages in our district. So this stretches beyond just English and Spanish. So that was really important to us and a reason for moving to this communications platform. Finally, one of the board goals that we had for last year was to launch a strategic communications plan, which you have before you tonight. So that is our twenty-three, twenty-four school year strategic plan, or sorry, strategic communications plan, let me specify that. And it is a dynamic document that is meant to be updated on an annual basis. So you will notice that these goals are very specific to this year, but as we continue to mark things off, we'll be updating that as we go. And I work closely with Mr. Wilder to be able to update that on an annual basis. So just to give you an overview, before we implemented this communications plan back in fall of twenty-twenty-two, we did a district-wide communications survey. And all of these strategies that we developed were a result from that survey. So first and foremost, the strategy that we felt was the most important is to strengthen communications efforts by refining and maximizing views of current and new platforms to elevate the district's image, brand, and reputation with positive stories and programs. The second strategy is that we will develop relationships, partnerships within the district, and with local media, businesses, community leaders to magnify our message and enhance visibility in our community. The third one is to achieve coordinated and proactive communication, both internally and externally. And finally, the fourth, provide ongoing support and training to district leadership, administrators, and staff. So under each of these different strategies, we have a variety of action items associated, and now you'll notice this is a very vast plan. This is like pie in the sky, we hope to achieve, but we might not get to everything, right? So this, you'll notice that there's many action items associated with each one of these strategies. So I'm quickly gonna go over these with you. So we hope to, first off, update the design of our staff portal this year, so that we can better support our staff right now. It's just a framework that exists with some links, but we'd really like that to be a more interactive place that our staff can go as a resource, that's a vision for us. Always ensuring that the website is kept up to date with content and continue our efforts to maintain ADA compliance. We also want to increase our social media engagement and our followers by creating a strategic communications calendar for our social media. We also hope to update our internal newsletter, the exchange, so that we can continue to increase engagement and make sure that is a great resource for our staff. We also plan to relaunch our Spartan Chat Podcast online radio program, and there's gonna actually be an announcement coming later this week about that, so stay tuned for that. And finally, with launching Parent Square as our district-wide platform, we know it's gonna be important that we continue to send out messaging to all stakeholders about the importance of what this communications platform means to our district, and also making sure we're utilizing it to its full potential. Within the second strategy, developing relationships, we talked about our back-to-school bash, so we can check that one off. Next, we plan to continue to have our State of the District event in partnership with our Sycamore Education Foundation. And as that is such an important community event now, we will continue to host that in the fall, so that's gonna be to come as well. Continue to cultivate media contacts, and of course, provide that flow of stories to our local media here in Sycamore, so that they can showcase the wonderful things that are happening with our schools. We also plan to hold town hall events, so that we can provide additional engagement opportunities for stakeholders. We will increase community visibility by attending and supporting city and county-wide events for our district. We also would like to do a better job of promoting our Shop Four Two Seven within the local community and beyond, and maybe even get some alum to come back and purchase items, and really just grow the Spartan brand in general, and that makes our district even more visible as well. Finally, we want to market the Sycamore High School Auditorium as a premier met in our community, as Hannah touched on in her presentation, and make that highly visible here in Sycamore. With our coordinated and proactive emergency communications, it's our goal to put in place a crisis action plan flow chart by the spring. In collaboration with our safety committee, we hope to provide refresher training for principals and school administrators. We also want to educate our families on our emergency communication procedures and make sure that they know exactly what to expect from us in any given emergency situation. We plan to pursue additional professional development in our departments to make sure that we're always up to date on the best practices for crisis management and communication. We also hope to provide immediate central and school-site communication support to principals during any emergency situation. Finally, providing district leadership with in-person support, key statements, fact sheets, talking points, other materials. Um, finally, providing district leadership with in-person support, key statements, fact sheets, talking points, other materials as issues arrive. And finally, under the fourth strategy, um, providing communication support and training. So, it is our goal to develop the communications best practices document, um, to support our school staff. We want to create and roll out social media guidelines for our district as well. Uh, we also would like to conduct some meeting, media and social media training sessions for staff or even one-on-one as needed. We also hope to provide training sessions and support for all district staff on parent square. And we were actually able to do that on the very first day of opening day. Uh, but we'll continue to do that through several, um, professional development days this school year. We also want to get our staff trained on our digital signage system carousel. We think that's like a hidden gem that, um, staff members would really see a huge benefit of learning um, so that they can actually upload their own postings through the carousel system. So, that's something that, um, Stephen has been working to develop as well. And then finally, uh, professional development for our entire communications department because we want to be the ultimate resource on best practice, uh, when it comes to all things communication. So, the best way we can do that is to continue to be students ourselves. That's it. All right.
Any questions for communications department?
I don't have a question, I just want to say I love this. I love, I love everything about it. I think everything that I've been fantasizing about in my head over the last, uh, few meetings is we've talked about having a district strategic, strategic plan with like bullet points. I mean, you, you've encompassed it maybe for your department here, but this, this is the sort of document that I want to have that says what we're trying to do as a district. And I think the, the goals you've laid out in there, the format, everything about it, I love. So, great work with that department, uh, with everything you're trying to achieve. I think it's, I think it's wonderful.
I, yeah, I just want to echo Eric's sentiments that I, just wow. I mean, I guess as a communications department, that's a, a tough, you know, bill to fill because I would, I would hope it's really well communicated, but really, wow, this is amazing. And I got to tell you, it, it is exciting because I think one of the biggest parts that I, I find most, uh, I guess the, the long shot, if you will, is like the strategy, what is it, two, section three, where we talk about essentially ways to get back to the school, make, and you've mentioned like visibility. And I think that's so quickly overlooked, but you think about like any alumni center. Um, Dennis Barcima, an excellent example of somebody who has given back, you know, amazing amounts. And I even, and a lot of these, these schools have these people, like we have Chick Evans Fieldhouse. But like, when you, when you spotlight what the school is doing, when you spotlight the need and the successes and the, and where, where the shortcomings, that I think really helps. That's, again, that's the long play. So, I'm really excited about this plan. I think this is absolutely amazing. I'm sure the amount of work that you guys put in already exceeds what's outlined in, in, you know, your jobs, but wow. Awesome.
On that note, where can I buy my Spartan sweatshirt?
Shop four two seven dot store or come on in and we, we can show you our wares too. So, we're located in the basement of the administration building. We're happy to show you what we've got.
All right, I'll reach out. Thank you.
I'm just curious, um, I, I say we, we hired the Spanish-speaking, I guess, person to help with the communication. But what if there's a family, and I'm not sure how common this is, that doesn't speak English nor Spanish? Um, how do we go about communicating with them? And I'm not sure if that's a dream even in your department, but that's something that's come up in my personal life trying to communicate with people.
Yeah, so there's a system called Argo, um, that you can utilize to actually call in a translator for a number of given languages. Um, so we do have access to a system, um, that allows us the ability to do that if needed.
All right, perfect. I was just curious.
I just read an article today about AI and how, um, one of the areas where they think it's going to help the most and, and be the easiest to develop is, is in language translation. Um, and then to really simplify things for us. You just have to keep on top of that and see what's available and take advantage of it.
Can you maybe talk to the, the long goal of, from a communication, specifically from the school district to parents? What the end game is with the, because I feel like right now, even as a, as a parent with kids in different schools, you know, I'm getting emails from like eight to eighteen and getting all these parent square. And I'll admit, I haven't even had, taken the time yet to sign up for that app or do anything else. But what, you know, give me the vision, are there still going to be multiple ways that all this information is coming? Or are we really looking to have that single app or single point of contact that's going to change that?
Yeah, so I think that was our vision with adopting parent square was to be able to consolidate a number of those tools. So, um, we are no longer utilizing school messenger, which was our, our mass communication system. So, um, we were also able to get rid of, uh, Do- Class Dojo, uh, Seesaw, a couple of other different programs. So, a lot of those folded in as well. I know eight to eighteen is still kind of an outlier, but I haven't given up on Chauncey quite yet. I think I might win him over. There's quite a, there's a lot of cool tools within, uh, parent square. So, I'm hoping at some point, we can kind of get us all into one happy family. You know, for people like yourself where you have multiple kids in multiple different buildings, it's an amazing thing to have it all in one place, right? So, I highly encourage you to download that app.
It seemed like even today, like there were two text messages, there were three emails. And if I hadn't seen that, I wouldn't have seen the soccer games I moved to every time.
Yeah, one nice thing about the parent square, um, app and even the platform on the desktop is that it is like a newsfeed style format and it's searchable and so it keeps everything. So, even if you lost a text message or you lost the email, you can go back into parent square and search, hey, I know your book sells, then just let me, you know, type that in and search, it'll pull it up for you. So, I, I'm hoping with some additional training and support for stakeholders as we adopt this new system, that everyone will continue to see the benefits. I did take a look, um, we do have forty percent of our district families have downloaded the app so far, which is pretty impressive as we're just getting started with the new school year. So, uh, we hope to see that number to continue to grow.
So, you say if a family doesn't, uh, one of the sixty percenters that doesn't have parent square, you're probably one of them in a high hustle. But, um, if, do they still, will they still get district emails?
Absolutely. So, even if someone says, I don't want an app, I don't want an account, they will just continue to receive district communications as normal, so email communications. Um, they will go into a digest format in default, so unless you switch that. So, every night at six P M., you would get all of the emails from one day. If you do go in and claim your parent square account, you can actually customize your communications to what works best for you. So, if you want to receive all building level communications via email, via text, via app notification, you can really drill down. And that was one of the things that came out of the survey, the communication survey last fall, was that people wanted to choose how they wanted to be communicated to. Some people don't check email, some people just want to text. So, that was another reason for us making this move into parent square was giving parents that choice, what works for them. And if you don't want to be, if you don't want to download the app, that's totally cool. Just keep doing what you're doing.
So, then the default, if someone doesn't download the app, is it still the parent square information just all pushed out at six? It's not like they could do if they downloaded it anyway, okay.
Yep, they still get all the same information and all of the like emergency communications, um, those are all still there as well. So, you would still get the all call, all text, all email in any sort of emergency, snow day situation. That's all still the same. Yep.
Good that snow day doesn't come in at six P M.
Yeah, no, those do not go to digest, no. Those are an override message. Okay. All right.
Okay, before they sit down, I just want to, um, recognize them one more time. Um, somebody coming in from outside of the school district. Having a communications department was, um, I wasn't quite sure how that was going to work. And I was used to doing a lot of that in my former district and in the smaller district. There are other districts larger than us that have one or two people and really are, are restricted in terms of what they can do because they haven't invested. So, first of all, we're really lucky to have great staff, Lauren, Jen, Hannah, Mason, but Valeria? I don't know how I mispronounced that, Stephen. Um, you guys have talked about Spartan TV and how that's grown. We'll always, there will always be room to improve with communications, but this group does a phenomenal job of getting our stories out. So, first of all, I just want to say thank you. Second of all, the board needs to take some credit for investing in this department. There are a lot of, there are a lot of my colleagues who I speak to that don't have communications departments or one or two people and they really struggle to get the word out, but also to, to, to get the communication back from the community. Um, the board here invested in the communications department many years ago and it's paid enormous dividends. So, this is one of those things where maybe several years ago, you took the leap of faith, um, it has paid off big time. So, um, so something that started maybe smaller years ago has really flourished and, and now you see the communications plan and all of the other work that they do. Again, these guys do a great job. Lauren and I talk all the time about ways to improve and, you know, we, they, we still get criticism on not communicating enough. But this is just the tip of the iceberg in terms of what they do, so, um, so thank you.
I'm excited, then, is, um, open discussion. Issues, observations, questions? Future gen ideas? All ready to go into executive? Uh, is there a motion to go into an executive session for the consideration of matters related to the appointment, employment, discipline or dismissal of personnel, purchase or lease of real estate and imminent litigation? So moved. Sorry. Roll call.
Apple?
Yes.
DeVito?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Grados?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Shiloh?
Yes.
Damba?
Yes.
Motion carried.
All right, uh, we're going to executive session and then return and go into open session for our final votes. We're back in open session. Is there a motion to approve the personnel, the amended personnel report as presented?
So moved.
Sorry. Moved and seconded, roll call.
Evans?
Yes.
Grados?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Shiloh?
Yes.
Apple?
Yes.
DeVito?
Yes.
Damba?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Not even going to ask.